Oh, I can't hear you. For some reason, I cannot hear you. Try it again.
Good morning. Good evening.
Good evening, Pastor.
Brown, Otis Brown.
Hi, Pastor Brown. I know exactly who you are, sir.
Okay.
We, I will be, I will be calling you in a second. We first have to start the meeting and then I will, I will call you on. So that you could do, you could do the honor of our invocation.
Still not able to hear you. Can you try it again?
How is this? Is this better?
Much better.
Thank you. I was gonna send Councilmember Lee over to your area.
We need her here.
Yes. I think we all need her. Alrighty, so council will stand in session. Ms. Flirck, let's go to roll call.
Mix of the Cruz.
Absent excused.
Mr. Cunningham.
I am here.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Present.
Mr. Kozachek.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here.
Item two.
Invocation and appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
So, we are very lucky tonight, colleagues and, and audience hearing at home. In honor of Black History Month, we are excited to invite Pastor Otis Brown Jr. of the Salome Christian Church to do our invocation tonight. Pastor, Pastor Brown, it's all yours.
First of all, thank you to the mayor and the council for allowing me to do this honor today. I'm excited for the council meeting, excited about the parade tomorrow, we'll be riding it. So let's pray. Dear Father in heaven, we are indeed thankful for another beautiful rainy and cold and windy day in Tucson. We're thankful for your continual providential care. Our thoughts and prayers are still going out for those that are sick or enduring their lingering effects of this COVID disease. But as we begin this session, another session this evening with our honorable mayor and council, we do pray for guidance and direction. We ask that you would blend our hearts and our minds together. To serve our fellow citizen is truly a great honor. Help us to remember that the whole is greater than the part. We ask you to now watch over Tucson and provide and protect, bless on all the coming events. We ask for your protection. We ask all these blessings. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Brown. We highly appreciate your presence in our council and thank you for your beautiful words.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So what, now we move on to item two. I'm sorry, item, item two C. Item, yeah, item two C. I have a couple of proclamations for tonight. One, the first one I have is for Engineers Week. And let me go over the proclamation. I don't know if we have someone tonight to receive this proclamation. But we will start. A proclamation of the city of Tucson, office of the mayor. Whereas engineers use their scientific skills and specialized knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers help solve major technological challenges of our time, from designing efficient building systems to rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters. And whereas engineering has been called the invisible or stealth profession because everything around, around us and things we use every day have been engineered in some way. Yet we may not see the engineers behind the scenes or know much about engineering. And whereas founded in 1951, the National Engineers Week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding of and interest in engineering and technology careers. And whereas EWeek is a formal coalition of more than 70 engineering education and cultural societies with more than 50 corporations and government agencies dedicated to raising public awareness of engineers' positive contribution to quality of life. And whereas EWeek promotes recognition among parents, teachers, and students of the importance of a technical education and high level of math, science, and technology literacy, and motivates youth to pursue engineering careers in order to provide a diverse and vigorous engineering workforce. And whereas ASHRAE, ASHRAE sets standards for the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration industry in addition to certifying and educating people in the industry all across the country. And whereas the Tucson chapter, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it. ASHRAE would like to acknowledge engineers across Southern Arizona in honor of National Engineers Week observed February 20th through the 26th of 2022. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim February 20th through the 26th, 2022, to the National Engineers Week and encourage all citizens of Tucson to join me with recognizing the importance, the important contributions of engineers to our daily lives. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona to be affixed this 23rd day of February 2022. And I think it is Damon?
Yeah, it's Bill Damon. Thank you. I, I'd like to accept the proclamation gratefully based up from the Tucson chapter of ASHRAE. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being with us and we really appreciate the work that you're doing, especially to inform and encourage young people to go into engineering careers.
Most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. I have a second proclamation. It's my, my honor to be able to welcome military personnel that serve on the USS Tucson, the submarine that is named after our beautiful city. And I know that we have special invited guests from the USS Tucson officers and crew members of our namesake submarine. So I'm really happy to have him here with us today. Thank you so much for being with us. Really appreciate it. I'll read a proclamation and then give you all an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like. But we're super honored to have you all with us tonight. Thank you so much for joining us virtually.
Thank you for having us.
Alrighty, so let me read the proclamation. There you go. A proclamation of the city of Tucson, office of the mayor. Whereas the USS Tucson submarine was launched on March 20th, 1994 and is the second ship of the Navy to proudly bear the Tucson name. And whereas the USS Tucson is one of the most advanced vessels in the world. And whereas the USS Tucson has named their galley the Charro Down Under, incorporated the San Javier Mission into their ship's crest and puts to sea with items throughout the submarine that recognize the special relationship between our community and the crew and families of the submarine. And whereas the crew proudly bears the name of our city on their uniforms as they travel throughout the world. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, confer upon Lieutenant Commander David Litz, Lieutenant Junior Grade Anthony Schlitt, Fire Control Technician Second Class Jose Lopez, and Machinist Mate Auxiliary First Class Jeremy Torres, the title of honorary citizens of the city of Tucson, Arizona, and invite all residents of the old pueblo to recognize them for their service to our great nation. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 23rd day of February 2022. Thank you all so much for your service and now honorary members of our community. I'd like to invite you to say something if you'd like.
We would like to thank Mayor Romero, the members of the council, and the people of Tucson for continued support of the ship and the crew. We appreciate your support and the efforts making this trip wonderful, and we look forward to future visits. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You honor us with your presence.
Thank you for having us.
Gentlemen, I, I'm ex-army, but I got this, this sweatshirt from my buddy from the Navy and want to give you, I believe it's a hoo-yeah for coming on.
Bear down.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we move on to item two D.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City manager's communication number 52 dated February 10, 3rd is received and made part of the record. What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt the appointees.
Second.
So there's a motion in a second, and I'd like to just call out the names of the individuals being appointed. So we are appointing Grace Shaw to the Design Review Board, and Mary Lou Fragomeni-Nutal to the Fort Lowell Historic Zone Advisory Board, and Margot Garcia Michael Harrier to the Environmental Services Advisory Committee. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'd like to personally thank the members being appointed today for their willingness to serve our city. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, we move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 47 dated February 23rd is received and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Alrighty, so we're going to start from six to one. This time around, I will not skip anyone. So we will start with Ward six, Councilmember Kozachek. Do you have anything to report on current events tonight?
No, I gave all mine to Richard, so just pay attention to him.
Member from Ward five, Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will mark the first anniversary of Ready Set Rec providing mobile recreation to Tucson. This is made possible by my motion to use Federal CARES Act funds to acquire six vans and equipment to bring recreation to the community. This was backed by the mayor and all the city council members. We've run it one year ago and mobilized the six vans in the community at various parks, locations, every week, ensuring that the entire community is served and has an opportunity to participate in recreation activities near where they live. Through the year, the vans have had 669 total park visits with 7,870 youth and 2,618 adult participants. Congratulations to Laura Hamway, Parks and Recreation Director, and the Parks and Rec Ready Set Rec staff and their works and accomplishments. This helps reduce a lot of stress, Madam Mayor, that we've seen. And I thank you for your leadership in that also. Also, congratulations to Laura Hamway and the Parks and Recreation Team, which submitted a state grant application for gunning about Edes Park. They'll be receiving the full amount of $500,000 as we go to the complete park project. I thank Laura. She's did outstanding job with that grant. Mayor and Mayor, on Friday, February 25th at 10:00 a.m., the Quinte Douglas Center, a flag raising ceremony in honor of Black History Month and the accumulation of the Buffalo Soldiers Memorial Place will take place. Mayor Romero, City Manager Michael Ortega, Colonel Jared Morland from Fort Wachiko Garrison Commander will be joining me in the celebration. It'll be a very historic day and very proud of the work that GSAAC and I have done to get this project funded and completed in the Quinte Douglas Neighborhood Center. February 25th will mark a great day for Tucson with the raising of the unit's flags and the brave and heroic Buffalo Soldiers mark its seven years of work taking this from a dream to a reality. And with a thank, the good citizens of Tucson who voted to approve the proposition 407, which the project was a part of, John Covington for attending the city and county hearings and speaking in support, Project Committee and the GSAs, their work on this, and my colleagues on the council for support. Also want to thank Reverend Pastor Otis Brown, Jerry Neely, Dr. Michael Ings, all our staff, and John Covington and Sam Freeman for all their help and support in this project. The memorial was available in May 2021. It was the first voter-approved, one-of-a-kind honor in the contributions of Black Americans in defense of the nation and setting, certainly, Southern Arizona. The memorial was funded through the donations of the GSAC and the Buffalo Soldiers Funds that is under delivers Parks and Connections 2018 voter-approved and bond program. Mask and physical distancing will be required. A live stream of the event will be shown on the Tucson Parks and Recreation Facebook page. Our community lost, thank you, Madam Mayor, for being there on Friday. And then the sad note, our community lost two great leaders. Former state senator David Bradley, former state senator Olivia Canna-Betford, both passed away last week. Both worked hard to improve the quality of life for all our young people, families, and our senior citizens. My condolences go out to the Bradley family, the Canna-Betford family. They will be missed. Their leadership will be missed. And a sad note too, I want a community advocate, Joe Gonzalez, passed away also on Monday. Well, he will be missed also. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually wanted to say a few words about Senator Bradley as well. He was our state senator in Legislative District 10, which I was a part of, and he was an integral mentor in when I first entered this space as well. So as, as Councilmember Fimbres said, he passed away last Saturday after a long battle with cancer. He spent 16 years in the Arizona Legislature, serving in both the House and the Senate. And he also served in the United States Navy. He earned a degree in psychology, management, and counseling and dedicated his life to public service. He was the CEO of La Paloma Family Services in La Frontera, Arizona, and dedicated his life to helping children dealing with child welfare and mental health. And in his day job, he spent time in public office, obviously, and fought tirelessly to help Arizonans, especially on issues helping youth, education, the foster care system, mental health, the opioid epidemic, environmental issues. And that included the drought contingency plan. So my team and I want to send our condolences to the Bradley family, especially his wife, Deborah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dahl?
Well, I too wanted to note with sadness the passing of David Bradley, a veteran and, and someone who worked across the aisle to protect children and families and to secure our water future. We need more people like him serving in the state legislature, of course. I also note another person who made this a better place, who's passed, is John Miles. Also a veteran, former miner and labor leader. And he was a constant advocate for peace and justice. And so may their memories and their stories of their good work be a blessing and continue to inspire. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahl. Councilmember Cunningham?
The first time my father ran for office in 1992, he was in a three-way primary for the legislature. The three-way primary consisted of himself, Andy Nichols, and David Bradley. All three men eventually became senators of that district in different incantations of that district in different decades. The fourth senator from that district was Gaby Giffords. So when you think about that line and that effect it had on its community and the pulse it has in Tucson, it's pretty amazing. Our paths crossed later when Nathan and I collaborated in his, his son collaborated in his streaming company. But the big thing about David is that his action for youth and passion for youth advocacy is unmatched, and we're gonna miss him. Olivia goes back to being my father's colleague and obviously my dad knew her mother well. So that family's served Tucson grate, gracefully for, for generations. So we mourn both their passings. And that's the downer part. But on a lighter note, this weekend, something that got overlooked. We have so much stuff going on this weekend. ESPN Game Day was here. There was all these other things going on. We have the rodeo coming up. We have the soccer tournament coming up. We have soccer spring training. All these things that we've always had. I think we have the Champions Golf Tournament here. All these things are going on in our community, but there's one thing that got overlooked this weekend, and that was the Ross Gruch Classic. And I want to give a shout out to TUSD and to Dale Lopez, Bob Wilk, and all the folks at TUSD who put the Ross Gruch Classic on every year. The Ross Gruch Classic has been going on for 39 years. Two years ago, some like 700 boys and girls participated in this basketball tournament. And guess how much they have to pay for it? Nothing. It's absolutely free for all participants to play in and play in that league. It's something special. It's the spirit of, of bringing youth recreational sports back that I've been talking about. We pocketed into all these different competitive clubs and things like that. And really, we just want kids to be active. So the Ross Gruch Classic was held. I ended up being the assistant coach for the seventh grade Gridley team or the assistant coach for the sixth grade Gridley team. I was the head coach for the Gridley seventh grade team, which won the champ, both teams won their championships. But I didn't get to coach the Gridley seventh grade team. Unfortunately, the coach of Dodge is also the assistant coach of Sabino, and he had to leave. So I ended up coaching Dodge because my son plays for that team. And my own kids at my own school that I teach every day beat, beat us. The fifth grade division had some great schools come in, and the sixth grade. And there's also a seventh grade girls' division. So all these different divisions played at two sites, Calabritti High School and Pueblo, and it's an amazing event. I urge everybody for next year to I urge everybody for next year to support the Ross Gruch Cougar Classic, one of the last public school basketball events in the nation, and there's nothing like it. And again, I want to thank Dale Lopez, who's done a great job over the years. A quick thing about Dale Lopez, the organizer of the Ross Gruch Classic, about a million years ago, when I was playing for Utterback Middle School, my first-ever middle school game, Dale was the referee. So there's your, there's the, there's how it's all comes full circle. So anyway, those are my announcements, Mayor. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. And I, too, want to add my condolences to the Bradley family and the Caja Bedford family for the loss of two incredible public servants that gave their entire lives, really, to improving the lives of others in our community. So I, too, want to add my condolences and say what amazing people Senator Bradley and Senator Caja Bedford were, really true mentors to many of us about how to serve our community. So I also want to announce a couple of events. One, as we continue to celebrate Black History Month, I want to invite everyone in the community, including my colleagues on the council, to join the Barbier Williams Performing Company and team keeping the culture alive as they present the fifth annual Our Blackness, Our Heritage: Trailblazers of the Divine Nine. This grassroots initiative that engages the community, collaboration, and culture within a family-friendly atmosphere with organizations that have paved the way for such endeavors. To promote and honor Black History Month, the current and next generation of Tucson leaders will produce a program that will highlight stepping within Divine Nine fraternities and sororities. Pretty Precise Dance and Stepping Team with guest artists Zuzu African Acrobats, sponsored by the U of A African Studies Department, National Panhellenic Council, and other Greek-lettered organizations. Join our friends on February twenty-sixth with doors opening at three P.M. and shows starting at four P.M. at the Berger Performing Arts Center located at twelve-hundred West Speedway Boulevard. The city is exploring the feasibility of commissioning a brand-new skate park beneath the freeway underpass at Cushing Street and I-ten. This is a project that, when I served as Ward One Councilmember, we first started exploring, and now the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Santa Cruz, is helping me lead this project with the support. I know that Councilmember Cunningham has been part of this conversation, as well as other of my colleagues. Let's see. Check out the Tucson Delivers website or Tucson Skate Park Alliance's Instagram to complete a survey on how this park should be designed. This park will bring life, will bring life to an underutilized space while providing a safe recreational space for our community. So visit TucsonDelivers.tucsonac.gov backslash pages, backslash Cushing Street Parks, Cushing Street Skate, to, to complete the survey for, for all, for all of us to get your information on what you can envision for Cushing Street Skate Park. With that, we move on to item four.
City manager's report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number forty-eight dated February twenty-third is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. No report tonight.
All righty, we move on to item five.
Liquor license applications report from city manager.
City manager's communication number forty-nine dated February twenty-third is received into and made part of the record. Mrs. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's agenda, we have three requests for new licenses, three requests for special events, and one agent change. The request for a new license by Dash Mart has received some protests and will be considered separately. So an appropriate motion would be to forward items five B two and three, five C one through three, and five D one to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the, the item considered separately, which is Dash Mart. Councilmember Kozachek, did you want to lead on this? Items?
Sure. First, let me ask if anybody from Dash Mart is on the call? Didn't think so.
Not that we're aware of.
Yeah, no, and we haven't heard a word from them. So we have, so let me just make a couple of comments before I introduce the Chair of the Alvernon Grant Initiative to make a few more comments. We have two bases on which to object to the liquor license. One is person, and the other one is location. TPD has recommended approval based on the applicant's background, but none of our staff reports address the issues that more alcohol bring to the area. Alvernon Grant Initiative, AGI, was formed over a dozen years ago as a way for the four neighborhoods that really make up the Alvernon Grant Quadrant to address crime. They meet monthly with TPD and with all the neighbors, with surrounding businesses. The convergence of crime in the immediate vicinity of Dash Mart has resulted in TPD forming a really focused effort on certain apartment complexes in the area, and that effort is based on TPD data that are gathered under a program called Place Network Investigations. We know Dash Mart is in the hub of shootings, of domestic violence, of fights, of knife attacks, robberies, and drug abuse. There are already multiple options in the Dash Mart Shopping Center and in the immediate area for both retail liquor sales packaged and at bars. There are also social service providers in the area. There's also a domestic violence sanctuary in the area, and a new healthcare facility located to serve low-income and underinsured clients is opening. So one thing the area does not need is another alcohol vendor added to the mix. So I'm going to introduce Ronnie Kotwika. She is the Chair of Alvernon Grant Initiative. She can make a few statements on behalf of AGI and the surrounding neighborhoods, and then I'll close when she's done. Ronnie, you can unmute yourself and go.
Thank you, Mayor Romero, councilmembers, and city clerk. I am Ronnie Kotwika, forty-six-year homeowner at thirty-two thirty East Seneca in Palaverdy Neighborhood. As president of PVA, PVA for twenty years, I am writing on behalf of the neighborhood. As facilitator of the Alvernon Grant Initiative, a fifteen-year project with Tucson Police, Ward Six, Three, and County District Five, and the neighbors of Dodge Flower Garden District, Oak Flower, and Palaverdy Neighborhoods, I recuse them also. As residents and taxpayers, we object to the issuing of a liquor license. The new project of Tucson Police Department Place Network Investigations conveyed shocking statistics at their first meeting in February. The PNI project focuses on Oasis Apartments at twenty-five fifty North Dodge, two blocks from the projected Dash Mart. Oasis has seventy-two one-bedroom apartments, generating nearly ten percent of Part One crimes in Operation Division Midtown, which covers forty-four square miles. These high-stress neighborhoods, consisting of large immigrant populations, social service agencies, and a facility for women and children seeking refuge from sexual abuse, participate in the AGI to pursue relief from high levels of criminal activity. All mentioned are within the one to two blocks of the proposed Dash Mart. That Dash Mart is in the same complex and within seventy-five feet of Walmart at thirty-nine twenty-five East Grant Road. Walmart sells liquor. The shared parking lot is a constant haven of D V, fights with knives, guns, and strong armed robberies. Philly Vertos in the same complex at forty-eleven East Grant was the site of a shooting on twelve twenty-nine twenty-one. Nottingham Apartments, twenty-six sixty North Alvernon, one block north of, was the location of a homicide in January two thousand twenty-two. Oasis Apartments within a block of Georgetown Apartments at twenty-five ten North Winstall and Catalina Towers, twenty-four seventy-five North Winstall, share their criminal element, which spreads through the area, culminating in the Walmart parking lot. Another small liquor store will only increase the highly volatile criminal activity and negative behavior. Dash Mart will be an easy target for the criminal element of those hanging out in the area to rob, smash and grab, and shoplift. Dash Mart never attempted to become a good business neighbor. The mantra used by the AGI for neighborhood businesses, supporting our neighborhoods and becoming part of the solution. Before applying, Dash Mart should have done their homework, examined the area, and reached out to the involved offices of Boards Three and Six to set up a meeting with the impacted neighborhoods. This illustrates that Dash Mart has no respect for the neighbors, neighborhoods, and moreover, their lack of integrity as a business. To the residents and stakeholders of AGI, this is another aspect of a business's blatant disregard for the community, where they want to set up shop and make a living and be the bully on the block. Had DoorDash thought outside the box, they could easily have made arrangements with Walmart for their deliveries to purchase alcohol. To DoorDash, I ask, are all your drivers twenty-one years of age to purchase alcohol? Based on the facts, we implore that you deny the request for a liquor license. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And with that, I would recommend that we, or ask that we do TPD, the surrounding neighbors, the people working through substance abuse challenges and other businesses, they're simply tired of crime. Do them a favor by recommending denial of the Dash Mart liquor license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Thank you, Ronnie, for joining us today.
Thank you for your time.
We move on. Thank you, Ronnie. And thank you for all of the hard work that you do to participate and engage and invest in that area. We move on to item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations, and you are requested to say your name, and if you live in the city of Tucson, and if you are being paid to represent someone else, call to the audience is limited to thirty minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. I have, and all, the city attorney, I have three speakers, Mr. Attorney, but one of them is for the liquor license previously just talked about. So I'll call them. I, I had not seen the list, so I'll just give them an opportunity to say something if they, if they'd like.
I think that's the right approach, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Then let me call Meg Johnson.
Oh.
And I'm so sorry, Ms. Johnson, for not calling you for the, for the previous item. Is she on, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, she is, Your Honor. She's muted.
Ms. Johnson, you just need to press star six to unmute yourself. No, nothing?
Still muted.
Okay. So let me move on and see if, if Ms. Johnson can actually unmute herself? Do you think I can unmute her? I don't know what the number is, though. Let's move on then to the next speaker, which is Abreza Zagir.
She's on.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, Ms. Zagir. Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name's Abreza Zagir, Chair of the West Side Development Neighborhood Association, and I am a citizen of the Sonoran Desert in Tucson. And Bravo on the climate action and adaptation plan I heard during the study session. That's fabulous. I am requesting, the reason I'm addressing you tonight is I'm requesting that all public hearing notices that are mailed and the posted signage notices for public hearings from the city of Tucson be in both English and Spanish. And also that they include the city clerk's mailing address where comments can be sent through the United States Postal Service. Over the last twenty-three months, I have canvassed our neighborhood and have talked with many people who are not too technically savvy, are older, do not have internet access, are disabled, and/or English is not their first language. COVID shut down libraries, and this is where many folks found public access to the internet. Inclusiveness is important for the public discourse, and everything should be done to include and invite those to comment on decisions being made by our city leaders, including those who may lack the knowledge or ability to access the internet, physically unable or compromised by other health issues, which prevents them from venturing out into public spaces. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz's public engagement notices were always bilingual, but also I think it needed a real mailing address. This would enable folks to write their comments, flip them into a stamped envelope, and put it in their personal mailbox. It's just to avoid some cumbersome and exclusive approaches to engage us citizens. So all I'm asking is for a little bit more inclusiveness and outreach procedures to enhance the public discourse and involvement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zagir. I'm going to go back to Meg, Ms. Meg Johnson. See if she could figure out a way to unmute herself.
I no longer see her on, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. So then let's move on to Ruth Kaplan.
We don't see her on, Your Honor.
We don't?
No.
Okay. And that was our last listed speaker for Call to the Audience for today. So Call to the Audience is closed, and we move on to item seven.
Consent agenda, items A through I.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is city vehicles exemption of certain city vehicles from bearing identifying markings. Item B, regarding boards, committees, and commissions, increasing the membership of the Metropolitan Education Commission. Item C is a final plat, S twenty-one dash zero one one, block plat for Coventry Estates lots one and two. Item D is a final plat, S twenty-one dash zero forty-one, Fontana-Davila subdivision lots one through three. Item E is real property acquisition of property for construction of the new fire station fourteen. Item F is an IDA intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona for operation and maintenance of electrical facilities. Item G is an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of Arizona State University for general fund award. Item H is the Tucson Code amending Chapter Ten fiscal year twenty-twenty-two compensation plan schedules. That item will be considered separately. Item I is Tucson Code amending certain Tucson Code provisions to align with the approved TPOA labor agreement by amending Section ten dash thirty-three point one relating to proficiency pay for commissioned police personnel certified as bilingual users of American Sign Language or Spanish. Section twenty-two dash ninety, Section Four relating to military leave, and Section twenty-two dash ninety-four relating to conditions for annual sick leave payment to police department commissioned personnel.
Now she's done.
All righty, so we are going to, I'm going to request a motion to pass these items on the consent agenda, and then we will talk. agenda, and then we will talk about item H separately at the request of Councilmember Cunningham. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So move.
Your Honor, I move. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda items?
Yes, Your Honor. We've got an item on here for the new fire station on the South Side, Ward Five. Congratulations. That's a good use of impact fees and a really good program for the firefighters. Really happy about it.
Me, too. I'm very happy about that item and really about time. So with that, let's go to roll call to approve the consent agenda items described.
So this will be for consent agenda items A through G and I, Mr. Cunningham?
Why call me first after I muted myself? Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Feinbriss?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of six zero. The item considered separately is item H, Tucson Code amending Chapter 10 fiscal year 2022 compensation plan schedules. Councilmember Cunningham.
We touched on it in study session, and I just want to be assured that we're not locking everything in for the ES. I know that we've got to talk about some job descriptions and kind of put everything. We have some equalization pieces to do, correct? Are we locking this until next year, or are we going to have this conversation ongoing? That's really what I really clarify.
Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, this is an ongoing discussion based on the review of the various job descriptions. As I mentioned during the study session, this particular conversation is ongoing because of questions on the job description. Keeping in mind that the job description is the basis for how an analysis is done with regard to the market. And so without having that tied down and some general agreement there, then it's hard to go out and confirm the market value. So that's what we're doing now. There is a meeting scheduled tomorrow. I'm expecting that this will be resolved within the next two weeks.
I'm optimistic that a couple mutual tweaks will get to where we want to go. I just want to make sure that if I voted for this, I'm not locking anything in, because when I spoke to Labor, I felt that some of their demands, not all of them, but I definitely felt that some of their, not even demands, just their ask, was reasonable and prudent. So that's kind of where I'm going with it. I want to make sure that I could still deliver that by saying that when I told them that I'd support them.
Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, so the compensation plan is necessary in order for us to publish the ranges, which gives us an opportunity to continue with our recruitment efforts. Those conversations, although related, are continuing, will not be slowed down because of this or stopped. We will continue, and if I need to make decisions outside of that, I'll bring it back to you in the future. But at this point, we believe that the ranges are within the rate or within the opportunity to make adjustments as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham, if you have no further questions, or if my colleagues don't have any further questions on this particular item, can you make the motion to pass and adopt item H?
Yeah, I'll move item H.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those, do we need a roll call, or should we just do a voice vote, Ms. Clerk?
We can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion of passing item H signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion passes six zero. Move on to item eight. Thank you all for that.
Item eight is a public hearing, Santa Cruz Area Plan Amendment, PA-21-01, 1511 West Valencia Road to allow commercial uses. Hearing Resolution Number 23445.
City Manager's Communication Number 63 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. Council colleagues and public in attendance, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Santa Cruz Area Plan to change the land use designation on the subject parcel from office high-density residential uses to commercial. The change in land use designation would allow residential office and commercial uses. Will staff be making a presentation before we begin this public hearing?
Your Honor, Honorable Mayor and Council, just very briefly, this is a concurrent plan amendment and rezoning. You passed this type of process about two years ago. The plan amendment will result in a change in land use designation for about 4.8 acres from office to commercial, and then the subsequent action you take will be a rezoning to allow a commercial use to occur. So two items before you. The first one is the plan amendment.
Okay. So this item eight and item nine are attached.
Honorable Mayor and Council, yes.
So this public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I don't have a list, Madam Clerk, Ms. Clerk, of any speakers wanting to talk at this public hearing. Do you?
That's correct, Your Honor. We did not receive any requests to speak.
Okay. So if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
I'm in the public hearing.
Second.
So a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23445 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23445 relating to planning and zoning, amending the Santa Cruz Area Plan SCAP, Key Parcel Four Land Use Map Three, PA-21-01. Amendment site located at 1511 West Valencia Road near the southeast corner of Midvale Park Road and Valencia Road. Change land use intensity designation from office high-density residential to commercial uses and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, on behalf of the vice mayor, I would like to share some comments about this particular project, specifically about the public outreach process that went into this and her preference for moving forward. Just so everyone is aware, the applicant reached out to the leadership of Sunnyside Neighborhood Association, Midvale Park Neighborhood Association, and the management of the office park north of Valencia prior to the neighborhood meeting to discuss the project. The team held the neighborhood meeting on July 8th virtually and included TPD in the notification at the request of the Neighborhood Association leadership. The meeting attendees included applicant representatives, PDSD staff, and two representatives of TPD. No neighbors or adjacent property owners attended. Most of the conversation was about how design and the use and how uses were to be safe and secure, and for the willingness of the users and TPD to work together on that issue as the project progressed. The applicant continued to work with both Neighborhood Association leaders, who were supportive of both the plan amendment and rezoning. The Sunnyside Neighborhood Association leaders worked with the applicant on a limitation noted in the PDP for rezoning that does not permit alcohol sales through the drive-through window of the restaurant. So after all of that process, and per the vice mayor, I would like to move to pass and adopt Resolution Number 23445.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just real quickly, this is our first concurrent plan amendment rezoning, and it's a good example of streamlining our approval processes without sacrificing the ability of the public to weigh in. So I'm going to be supporting this motion as well.
I know. I was going to note that as well, Councilmember Kozaczek, that it's our first project on the concurrent process. So I'm happy to see that there was a good process, that everyone feels comfortable, neighbors and surrounding businesses. So congratulations to the vice mayor and all of the group working on this project. So with that, let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Feinbriss?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Resolution 23445 passes by a vote of six zero. Item nine?
Zoning, C9-21-19 Center Point Valencia and Midvale O3 and C1 to C2, City Managers' report.
City Managers' Communication Number 59 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.7 acres from O3 and C1 to C2 zoning. The applicant intends to develop a drive-through restaurant and self-service car wash on the northern 1.7 acres of the larger 4.88 acre parcel located at 511 West Valencia Road. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant present?
Good evening, Mayor Romero, members of the council. My name is Robin Large. I am a planner at Lazarus and Sylvan, and I am here representing the applicant, Center Point Development, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Thank you, Robyn, for being here with us. I just have one question for you. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
We are, yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much. With that, Ms. Clerk, do you have to read the item?
No, Your Honor, there's no resolution involved, so we can accept a motion.
So what is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, as you indicated, this is connected to the previous. So I'm not going to reread everything that I just read with respect to the public outreach process, and instead, as per Vice Mayor Santa Cruz's preference, I'm going to move to approve the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Large, for representing the applicant. Have a nice evening. I think that was it. I think that was not painful at all, was it?
It was not painful. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a nice evening. Thank you. Item 10?
City Administration approving the appointment of Sharon McDonough as the Public Safety Communications Department Director, Ordinance Number 11913.
City Managers' Communication Number 64 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11913 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11913 relating to the Department of Public Safety Communications, approving the appointment of Sharon McDonough as the Director of Department of Public Safety Communications and fixing compensation, setting an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
So before we move the item, I'd like to take this as a point of privilege to welcome Ms. McDonough to the city team and the public safety team. I am so happy to see that this amazing public servant with so many years of experience, so talented, so committed to the city of Tucson, and so knowledgeable, is taking the lead in our Public Safety Communications Department. Absolute team player, and I have so much more to say, but I'm really happy to have this opportunity to really move forward with a person that has been serving the city of Tucson for so many years. So I just wanted to thank you, Sharon, for wanting to step up and accepting the role of Director of the 911 Communication System. And before I open it up to my colleagues on the council, I would love to invite you to say a couple of words if you'd like to.
Okay. I just want to, personal, Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for this opportunity, for your faith in me. I love the city of Tucson. I love the work that we do, and I know how important it is that we all collaborate to get things done. I'm so proud to have the good fortune and the opportunity to be part of this dynamic forward-thinking leadership team, and I'm excited to be here. I really look forward to the work. Thank you for your faith in me.
Thank you so much for wanting to serve us, hopefully for many, many years to come. Thank you. Really appreciate it. We're very happy to welcome you as the Director of our 911 Communications Department. Any of my colleagues want to add some words, or?
I just have a quick question. Hasn't even taken the job, and Sharon, it looks like you're in a padded cell. So has that gotten to you?
Trying to stay safe.
Chad just stuck in there, or what's going on with that?
These background apps are wonderful, aren't they?
You're right. So welcome to the team, though. We appreciate your work.
With that, Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation that Sharon McDonough is the Director of the PCSD Office, they pay period, and includes February 23rd, 2022.
Second.
So there is a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 11913, and I know that there's further discussion. My colleague, Councilmember Lee, does have her hand up, so go ahead, Councilmember.
I'm sorry. In these moments of celebration, I just can't help myself, but want to just congratulate you, Sharon, and thank you for, as the mayor said, stepping into this super critical role. I mean, all of our departments are so important, but this is just, you know, life or death calls coming in, as obviously you are well more aware than I am. But I just want to thank you so much for stepping into this space. I have all the faith in the world in you, so you know you have a support system here, and thank you, and good luck. Not that you need it, but I'm rooting for you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. So if there's no further discussion, then we go to roll call.
Mr. Feinbriss?
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Mr. Cunningham?
Congratulations, chief. Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Congratulations and welcome onboard as your new, the new page you turn into a new experience as the Department Director of our 911 Communications. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Really appreciate it. I'm very excited.
Thank you all.
All right. Ordinance? Thank you. Ordinance 11913 passes by a vote of six zero. Item 11?
Economic Development, Approval of Primary Jobs Incentive Development Agreement with Project Penny, Resolution Number 23441.
City Managers' Communication Number 51 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk?
Resolution Number 23441 relating to economic development incentives, authorizing and approving the primary jobs incentive development agreement between the city of Tucson, the city, and SkyWest Airlines Incorporated, a Utah corporation, the company, for expansion of its operations by constructing an aircraft maintenance hangar at Tucson International Airport, Tucson, Arizona, the property.
So I do see Ms. Barbara Coffey on screen. Barbara, did you want to include anything on this project?
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of council. I think you're pretty well-versed in what's about to happen, but we're very excited to welcome SkyWest Airlines with their expansion and new jobs that they'll create, and we just are pleased to have this item in front of you that would confirm their development agreement if you decide to move forward. The company is planning to create 50 new jobs. Thirty of those will be the ones that relate to our primary jobs incentive, paying in excess of $54,932 per year, and they must retain those jobs for the three-year term. So that is the premise of the agreement, and we're just very excited to see this opportunity. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Mr. Rankin?
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, there's one Scrivener's error in the agreement that I just need to read the correction into the record. It's in Section 2.3.5 relating to the new job requirements. As Ms. Coffey just mentioned, it's a requirement to maintain the 30 new jobs through the term of the agreement. One reference in the agreement mistakenly referenced it as 25, so that will be corrected in that Section 2.3.5 to read 30 instead of 25. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I do see Councilmember Cunningham's hand up as well.
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to congratulate SkyWest for coming into Tucson. This is a long time coming. SkyWest actually operates several commuter flights for different airlines into TIA. But what's important here is by hosting them here, we have the opportunity to expand our inventory of direct flights into destinations on that are basically west of the Mississippi. So I'm really excited about this. This was a long time coming. We've aggressively gone after Allegiant, we've aggressively gone after Southwest. SkyWest, interestingly, is based in St. George, Utah, so up the road, and they're they're in that small town, and so this is an opportunity for us to really develop their presence here. I think they're going to be a great community partner, and I don't think 50 jobs is where we're going to stop. I think we've got a long, a long haul and a lot more jobs to come. So thanks a lot, SkyWest, and we look forward to your partnership.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, exactly right on to the point. I'd like to attach myself to your comments, but I also like to say that besides the the 50 new jobs being created, SkyWest is investing $5 million in capital here in Tucson, and so that $5 million will create additional jobs and will create some construction sales tax, but also that it really is a strategic, a strategic move on on behalf of the city of Tucson to aggressively pursue SkyWest to grow here with us. So it's it's a really good, really good thing for the city of Tucson, wonderful for our airport, and I'm looking for, I'm looking forward to to our partnership with SkyWest when they when they start the process of construction and hiring those 50 new jobs. I also want to congratulate Barbara, Barbara Coffey and our team for their hard work in making sure that they, you know, brought SkyWest to Tucson, and I did all of their due diligence to get this done. So thank you, Barbara, and the Economic Initiatives team.
Madam Mayor, I want to thank the team also, who worked really hard, several times with these folks, who got this going, and it's a big push in the arm for Ward 5 and for the airport authority, funding getting off their butts and moving. But then I want to move and pass and adopt resolution 23441. The Renaissance of Ward 5 continues.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Sorry, Mr. Februs?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Congratulations, and thank you all for your hard work on this. Ordinance, let me see, Resolution 23441 passes by a vote of six zero. Item 12?
Establishing Truth in Taxation Policy and Independent Oversight and Accountability for 2022 Charter Amendment Proposition 411, ordinance number 11914.
City Managers Communication Number 65 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11914 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11914 relating to Finance and Public Safety, adopting a truth taxation policy with respect to the use of tax revenues in the event of voter authorization of the 2022 Charter Amendment for Street Improvement, Proposition 411, at the May 17th, 2022 special election, providing for ongoing independent oversight and accountability of the administration of the tax revenues, amending the duties of the 2012 Bond Oversight Commission and the Complete Streets Coordinating Council, renaming the 2012 Bond Oversight Commission to the Independent Oversight and Accountability Commission, committing to ongoing but separate funding for certain public safety costs, and declaring an emergency.
So before I open up for discussion, I'd like to invite the city attorney, Mr. Rankin, to do some clarification in terms of language. Mr. Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor. In getting the materials out for this item, including the ordinance, there were a couple of things that I had oversight on that, and I want to clarify and read some corrections into the record. One has to do with the commitment to ongoing funding for collector street improvements, which was part of the council's direction at the last meeting. That was captured in the ordinance in the warehouse clauses, but I neglected to to carry it over into the substantive provisions. A second correction, well, clarification really is just with respect to the ongoing Oversight Commission, to clarify how appointments and vacancies are handled. So with respect to those two items, first of all, in the title on page one of the ordinance, we will add language to include a reference to collector street improvements. So the last phrase, next to the last phrase, will read committing to ongoing but separate funding for certain public safety costs and for collector street improvements. Then on page five of the ordinance, under section 5A2, and this refers to the terms of the Oversight Commission, the language that indicates that the members of the commission can be removed at any time, whether or without cause by the manager, will be rephrased to read that, starting at the bottom of page five, except that each appointing authority, parentheses, the mayor, and each council member, and/or the city manager, and per and, may remove their appointees, with or without cause during the period of the commission's existence. And then I'm including a subsection three immediately following that relating to vacancies that will read vacancies on the commission shall be filled by appointment in the same manner in which the members are initially appointed. That just clarifies that whomever made the appointment gets to fill a vacancy for their appointee. And then finally, towards the end of the ordinance, on page 10, in section four of the ordinance, we will add the following sentence to the end of that paragraph. Additionally, subject to the same conditions, the mayor and council commit to ongoing funding for collector street improvements in an amount not less than $15 million annually for a period of five years, using funds separate from Proposition 411 tax revenues, including available highway user revenue funds, HERF, and the city's general fund. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin, really appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to add, before we move the the ordinance, I wanted to make sure that through the adoption of the truth in taxation policy, we are reaffirming to the voters of the city of Tucson our commitment to transparency in the spending of taxpayer dollars, that the renamed Independent Oversight and Accountability Commission, as well as the Complete Streets Coordinating Council, will ensure that these funds are spent efficiently and consistent with Proposition 411 ballot language, that both committees will be composed of private citizens from our Tucson community in order to provide independent oversight for Prop 411 revenues, and that these oversight mechanisms have proven to be very effective in delivering both Proposition 407 and Proposition 101 projects. So through Prop 411, we will be able to improve the condition of every single neighborhood street in Tucson while promoting safety for all modes of transportation. So I'm really happy to have this language tonight. I'm also very happy that through the truth in taxation language, we are reaffirming our commitment to invest in our public safety departments, both police, fire, and 911 communications, as well as continuing to invest in collector streets that connects neighborhoods and are a very important piece of connecting all modes of transportation. So really happy to see that in black and white and in language for Tucson voters to know that we are bearing as clear and transparent as possible in committing to the things that we talked about as we put Proposition 411 on the ballot. Councilmember Cunningham?
Your Honor, I was just ready to move the ordinance. I I I think the, I want to commend the council for acting councilly to get this on the ballot and get it done the right way. This this truth in taxation ordinance, well done by the the attorneys, by my, just to get it done in the time crunch we were in. So this is totally number one, this is how we're going to do it, you know, they, we we got a bad headline and a great article this week about what we've done, and that demonstrates kind of what it's all about. We're getting it right, and we can, we're going to continue to get to get it right. Hey, everybody's road's getting paved in a decade, come on. When would, when were we ever going to be, thought we were going to be able to say that? So I move that we pass and adopt the ordinance.
So there is, there's a motion, there is a second. Councilmember Kozaczek?
Yeah, either clerk, city manager, city attorney, could you just walk through real briefly the election process, all by mail, one day, voting sites, you know, what what can people expect?
So Councilmember Kozaczek, members of the council, Mayor Romero, this will be a vote by mail election. Ballots will be mailed April 20th, and we will have voting locations open on Election Day, May 17th, as well as our ballot replacement center at 800 East 12th Street will be open from April 21st through May 17th, in the event a voter needs to replace their ballot. We will also have drop-off locations at all three recorder offices available April 21st through May 17th.
And that's on your site, Suzanne?
Yes.
And most of those options would go away if some of the legislation that's in front of the state legislature passed right now, but they are still available now, and they will be on May 17th.
Yes.
Yes, thank you so much. So any further discussion from my colleagues? Hearing none. Suzanne, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mr. Februs?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Ordinance 11914 passes by a vote of six zero. Item 13?
Budget and Internal Audit Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021 Audit Results, Resolution Number 23442.
City Managers Communication Number 53 dated February 23rd is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23442 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23442 relating to Finance, Demonstrating Compliance with Arizona Revised Statute Section 41-1494.
Alrighty, what is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I move to pass and adopt resolution 23442.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I just wanted to go to Mr. Ortega, see if there was a presentation needed or any any clarification or anything that has to be presented to council.
Mayor, we did send out the presentation to you a bit ago, and so we have that. I believe that we do have someone here from the auditors that can be available to answer questions. I think it's Cory Avizou can certainly present the the findings very briefly, but the information was provided to you, and we, actually the staff and the auditors are available, should the council have any questions.
Mr. Avizou, did you want to add something?
Good evening, Mayor Romero and members of the council. I understand you were provided our presentation. Staff and management did a great job of preparing a communication in preparation for this item. So really, I'll take your direction at this point. If you'd like us to answer any questions on the presentation provided, we certainly could, and/or the audit that we performed for your fiscal year 21 audit, we can certainly do that. So I'll take your direction at this point, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Avizou. I just wanted to personally thank you, and I know that you work with our staff, but really your staff and all of the work that you have done in terms of your due diligence and adhering to stringent accounting standards. Really congratulate you for your independent eye and putting an eye into the work that we do and in our finances, but mostly thank you for the hard work. I did, I am in receipt of your presentation. I have looked through the information provided to mayor and council. I don't have questions, but I do want to provide an opportunity for my colleagues just in case they they have any questions or comments on this item. I'm not hearing any, Mr. Avizou, I think.
And Mayor, if I may, I appreciate your comments, but may I also just thank and your staff as well and management, all those in finance, and just not in finance, we we work with a number of departments, as you can imagine, for an audit this size, reaching out to numerous parties, so always responsive, always helpful, and always guess what we need as your auditor. So I'll turn around to thank you and thank you and your staff as well.
Thank you, we really appreciate your presence and and the work, the hard work that you put into into making sure, you know, that the Tucson taxpayer has all of the accurate information that we must provide our community. So thank you, Mr. Avizou, and thanks, thanks to you and your team.
Absolutely, thank you.
So Ms. Clerk, let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaczek?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Februs?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Resolution 23442 passes by a vote of six zero. Thank you all involved. Item 14?
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, at or after 5:30 PM. It is 6:53 PM. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful rest of your week.